7/25, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of Littleton City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Protembar.
Yep.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Reichert.
Here.
Councilmember Ryden, for the last time.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on our agenda tonight is approval of the agenda council. Everyone's had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seen no changes, it's approved without objection. Item four on our agenda is proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight. Item five tonight is public comment. This is a public comment portion for items that are not part of ordinances on second reading or public hearings. If you're here for ordinance 31, 2024, there will be a portion later in the evening for that. But public comment portion is a time for members of our community to come express opinions regarding issues that are, as I said, not part of public hearings. Each person will be limited to three minutes. I will let you know when you hit your three minutes. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Council is not authorized under open meeting laws to take action at this meeting on issues raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. May refer matters to the city manager or city attorney for immediate feedback. We have a few people here signed up for public comment. We have, first up, is J.D. McCrum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is J.D. McCrum. I live in District Two, and I wanted to just take a very quick moment of time tonight to publicly recognize and thank Councilmember Ryden. For the vast majority of her term, she has been the liaison to the Arts and Culture Board and a great advocate for arts and culture in our community. So on behalf of the members of the Arts and Culture Board, on behalf of the organizations that make up the community and the fabric that makes Littleton so special and so unique, thank you so much for your service, and we all continue to look forward to working with you in your next role as state representative.
Thank you. Next up is Kim Caulfield.
I'm way too short. Thank you, Mayor and Seth. I wanted to talk about communication with the city. We have lived here for 12 years. We moved in 12 years ago, and communication, I think, has varied a lot in the city, how well I feel like issues have been communicated to us. And so this, 31 happened, but that was just one in kind of many different things. I know we just had a baby this year, but down the pipeline, there was the Broadway Study, there was the Main Street Study. And if I were to pull the audience right now, I'm gonna imagine that there's more than just a handful of hands that have not heard about either of those surveys that we're up to take. I'm a millennial. I grew up in the age of social media. My Facebook, when we could get Facebook, was like the year after Facebook started. So I grew up in the age of social media, and there's a lot of social media communication, but social media is also very varied. Sometimes things don't show up in your feed. Even if you like them, even if you follow them, it doesn't show up in your feed. So you may not hear about something via social media, and so that can only be one of many strategies to get the word out. I have right here an article, this was 2019, about the COM Plan, when we passed the COM Plan, and I want to read a section from this because I think this talks to the different ways that the city can communicate. It says, "Both documents are the result of Envision Littleton, an 18-month input process run by project manager Kathleen Osher and consultants from Kendig Keast Collaborative. Project staff reached out to community for input in a variety of ways," Osher told council, "including numerous social media posts, mailings, a banner over Main Street, a slew of in-person appearances at locations ranging from events, city events, to Bemis Library, to Littleton Adventist. The result, she said, was a total of more than 8,300 conversations with residents and hundreds of responses to an online survey. The result, while just a fraction of Littleton's population of more than 45,000 was superior to other municipalities that have sought similar input. I was really surprised to see how much of their time people were willing to donate to have those conversations," she said. So I don't like to come and complain. I don't think that that's constructive at all. So I put together a bullet list, which I'm probably gonna have to email, a few things that I think could help. Reorganize the Littleton online email, highlight those important things right at top rather than have them just down in a list. Send out a dedicated email to that same list. Say, "Potential memo, important rezoning, take this survey." Front page of Littleton Independent instead of page three. Postcard flyer sent to each household. We've done that before with different surveys in the city. Make the survey available in print for people who aren't taking it online, maybe at the library, information at the library and signs around town, and then hold district and neighborhood meetings.
Thank you for your feedback, Kim. If we clap after everyone's talking, we're gonna be here a long time. There is no one else signed up for this public comment. Is there anybody else in the room that wish to speak? Come on up, sir.
My name is Greg Sullivan, 7775 South Hill Drive, District Four. I'm against the ordinance, but most of my talk is about the swale and what's happened to the swale and the trees at Costco. So I gotta say that I started this journey with you all back in August about trying to preserve some environmental benefits at the swale and the trees about Costco development. I placed over 1,500 flyers on residences, and I have over 150 signatures. Over Christmas, you cut down every tree. You clear-cut every tree on the swale, and not only that, you left three-foot stumps where they were. That's outrageous, just terribly outrageous. So I want to say, the council does not consider the social cost to the community versus the developers' benefits of their development plans for the site, such as environmental impacts and the human health. Council fails to recognize the unique public-private partnership between the City of Littleton and Republic Investment Group at Mineral Place. It does not understand your role as in a PPP, and that's just outrageous. You're giving up so much. So I've talked to you about that, but you just ignore it. You say, "It's a private property. We can't do anything about this. It's a developer." But the city has entered into a 10-year contract to give up 50% of your sales revenue to buy the property. That says that you have a responsibility to us, to take care of us. The other thing, the other thing you've done is you-
Please limit the applause.
Yeah. The other thing you've done is you greenwashed us, okay? What I mean by greenwashing is you say that we're gonna plant a net 650 trees on this property, making a total of 900. The amount of pollution that you're gonna create would take 8,000, 800,000 one-and-a-half-inch trees to sequester the amount of CO2 that you're gonna produce by the Costco development alone. You've given a variance to the developer of a 20%. Well, you gave a variance to the developer as developer wanted 10%, and it called for 20%. The developer asked for a setback of 100. It was supposed to be 300. There goes the swale, okay? So the point is, we have to move on, and I think that in the spirit of this, I believe the city needs to set up a Littleton Tree Trust. And with that trust, you get money from the sales tax that you've taken, and you're able to plant more trees at the site and in the city, and we're gonna need it after the passage of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Is there anybody else in the audience that would wish to speak during public comment? Ma'am?
Okay, I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Susan Schnick. I live at 586 West Easter Place, which I've told was Zone Three, Area Three. We've been there for over 50 years. When we moved in, it was country. It was the end of the world, and we loved it. And we loved the neighborhood, the streets, the feel, the High Line Canal, the people, the schools, everything. We were very lucky. The first big impact came to our neighborhood was Highland's Ranch years ago. Traffic, people, stoplights, congestion, and the beginning of the loss of country. But we got used to it, we complained, and we accepted it. Then Marathon Oil closed, and for years, the land stayed empty to our relief, and as developers came and went, but it did sell and did begin its building, which of course is increasing housing and cars and everything else to us. I do not mind the kids, love the kids. I'm worried about kids, more kids crossing Broadway, more kids coming down Fremont Hill, more kids going to Runyon Euclid Heritage because the traffic at that intersection is bizarre. And yes, you've done studies, but nobody has sat there for two or three days and watched it. It just is, it's a case for trouble. And now in the last two months, the council has approved the new development of 16 Dry Creek Circle, and I'm sure many of us here are here because of that, because of the impact that's going to do to us. I was at the planning meeting and was discouraged at your arguments and your discussions. Pam, thank you. You were the dissenting vote. Appreciate you. We're mourning the loss of reason and the loss of open acres of land and wondering why this has to happen. And now we also have the development on mineral, Costco's going in. More cars on Broadway, more cars on Santa Fe, mess, congestion, stoplights, people, traffic everywhere. Could you just, I just, I guess my plea is to slow down, let us mourn, let us grieve, give us a few years to accept all these other changes that you've made for our little home that we call Littleton, that we love. And because Littleton still houses many old timers, I'm one of them, we could just, we just need some breathing room. The younger generation doesn't care about space the way we do. The younger generation is a different generation, but we live here, we've supported you for over 50 years, and we would love to have it stay the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Sir, will you, no? Is there anybody else in the room that would wish to speak, or anybody else in the overflow room, or anybody else watching outside in the hall that wish to speak? Sir? If you, if you wanna speak, just come up and get in a line in the path right there.
Hey there, my name is Graham. I am a longtime resident of Littleton. I've lived right down by where Wild Ginger is for a while. I've seen, you know, single-family homes get destroyed, demolished, and have an apartment building built there. It has hurt the aesthetic of our neighborhood, it's hurt the culture, and it's, it's just, it's hurt everyone, really. It feels like you're more interested in who might move to Littleton than who lives in Littleton. So I'd just like you to consider the people that, you know, are already here, that call this place home, and as, you know, the previous speaker mentioned, you know, give us that chance to, you know, adjust and adapt and grieve, you know? It's, it, going too fast is a way to alienate it and, you know, stop that growth. And, you know, maybe it needs to happen, but it doesn't need to happen that fast, sort of thing, yeah. Let me check my notes. Yeah, and that's the other thing I had noted down, is that they did this same kind of thing in Inglewood, voted for it, and then they had to come back and then vote against it because it had gone so poorly. So, yeah, I would just caution everyone against, you know, moving too fast in any one direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that wish to speak? Sir? And just, I want to remind people, if you're here to speak on ordinance 31 specifically, there is a portion on the agenda later in the meeting. Anybody else? Give it a second, there's a lot of you. All right, well, no one's coming in through the doors that they're hearing this, so we are going to move on. The next item on the agenda is comment and report time. So I'm gonna start with Councilmember Reichert.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Grove.
I report. Before the holidays, the council got the opportunity to meet with our state legislatures, our state legislatures, and begin some conversations so that we can partner together and work together. So it was an informal event, and it was very helpful. And these are the kinds of things we do to work with people at the state level. Also today, myself and Councilmember Peters and staff met with South Suburban, we're the liaisons of South Suburban. A couple of things came up. We talked about the legal trail and that we had some issues about whether we're gonna pave it or not, and that's gonna be resolved tomorrow night at the board meeting at South Suburban. We discussed Jackass Hill and what's on there, reviewing a contract to make some upgrades there. There's been a new park in Trailmark. And we're also gonna see some pickleball courts, if you haven't seen it already, at the corner of University and County Line, and those will be outdoor pickleball courts. Hopefully, they'll be far enough away from residential areas so that they won't bother people, and there is going to be some sort of office where they'll have some restrooms and an office. So that's what's going on at South Suburban.
Thanks. Councilmember Peters?
No report.
Councilmember Ryden?
Just to express my thanks for getting to serve on this city council for the last three years. I'm very grateful for the opportunity, and I'm really excited to get to continue to represent Littleton and the rest of House District 38 in the Colorado State Legislature. So thank you, colleagues, and thank you, citizens.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, just two meetings going on tomorrow. We have the Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants Meeting at 8:00 at Town Hall Center. All's welcome to attend that. It is for the merchants, but you're welcome to attend to see what's going on. And then tomorrow afternoon, the Downtown Development Authority will be meeting at ACC. I believe that's, there'll be, there'll be somebody there to walk you through. I believe it's up on the third or fourth floor, so that starts at 4:00. So you're welcome to attend that, too, to find out what downtown, the downtown authority has planned for 2025.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Ryden stole my comments, saying how much I'm going to miss working with her and as a partner and some guidance on this council. We started our journey together, you know, over three years ago, and I can't be more excited for her work moving forward. So thank you for your time and service.
I just want to say, you know, as the first meeting of 2025, I am so glad to see so many people made their New Year's resolutions to get more involved with city council and get involved and come here. So thank you for being here. If this is your first time in city council chambers, please don't make it your last. Please come back, please engage with us, and let us know what you thought. That's why we're here, we represent you. And so I, okay. I also want to thank the police department. They put on an impressive program with the Make-A-Wish Foundation for a young lady who has a terminal illness last week and let her have a day that she will and her family will always remember. And so just thank you for that. And then finally, yes, Councilmember Ryden, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the last three years. You will be messed up on the dais here, but I know you're gonna do good things downtown Denver. So I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. No, no report tonight.
City Attorney?
No report, thank you.
All right, next up, scheduled appearances. We have no scheduled appearances tonight. Item eight is consent agenda items. Consent agenda items may be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A, Resolution 01 of 2025, resolution approving designation of where notices of public meetings are posted and identifying the newspaper where notices and other information required to be published will be printed. B, ID 25006, motion to approve amendments to December 17, 2024, regular city council meeting.
Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items A and B. Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items A and B. Council, is any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seen no discussion, voting's open?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item nine, general business. We have no general business here tonight. Item 10, our ordinances on second reading and public hearings. So speakers wishing to address council as part of a public hearing will be limited to three minutes, just as before. There are sign-up sheets. I think everyone got through those out in the hallway. We have two ordinances on second reading tonight. First is ordinance 32 of 2024, an ordinance on second reading amending ordinance 24, Series 2023, appropriating funds for the 2024 annual budget for all municipal purposes of the City of Littleton, Counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, State of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. So council, we'll have staff presentation, we can ask questions, then we'll open the public hearing for this item here, and then we'll have a motion to vote. So turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time of the year, as we, as we close out one year and move into the next year, it's, it's a regular budget process for us to, to seek your support to, for any final budget adjustments for the prior year, and that's what we have for you tonight. These are, both these, these adjustments are not to the general fund, but they do balance out a couple of our special funds. So with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director Tiffany Hooton for a brief summary, and then we'll seek your vote on the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have a budget amendment before you, ordinance 32, 2024. What this is, is this is a request from council to amend the 2024 budget related to employee insurance funds. We do have two funds that we are requesting amending this evening. One is related to our health insurance, our dental insurance, vision, and a few other benefits that are provided to the city employees. This is an increase, or a request of $850,000. What this is specifically related to is the health insurance claims. The city is what is called self-funded, which means we do not contract directly with a healthcare provider, but rather we do assess premiums for the employees and the city, and we actually pay the majority of the claims. We do have a provider who provides some contracted rates with health providers throughout the plan, and so a little bit different than others might be used to. But we did indicate that there's going to be an excess of expenditures in 2024 specifically related to prescription costs. I'm sure everyone else is seeing that and feeling that and participating in that. Additionally, our health clinic did come in a bit higher than we anticipated when we did develop the 2024 budget. What we are going to do is we are gonna monitor the health fund in 2025 and in 2026. This actually will give us the ability to look at some different options potentially for our employees, maybe providing some lower plans that will also decrease the cost for the employees and the City of Littleton. So we are gonna plan on going through some sort of procurement process in 2025 to look at our health insurance plans, and we hope that that will provide some savings in the future. The good thing about our health insurance fund is that we do have fund balance in this fund, and so this excess expenditure will come from fund balance. It does reduce the fund balance to about $380,000 at the end of 2024, which is why we're gonna continue to monitor, monitor those claims to make sure that we have adequate fund balance in the future. The other fund that we are asking for an amendment in 2024 is related to property and liability, and this is mainly due to just the timing of getting solidified premiums for the city, and we had to include some estimates in 2024, and unfortunately, they were lower than we anticipated. So we are asking for $125,000 P and L covers, errors and omissions, and liability and property liability for the entire city. Again, we do have a fund balance in this fund of about, it'll be about $900,000 at the end of 2024, which is a very healthy fund balance for P and L. So I'm excited that we are able to fund that from fund balance. This total increase to the 2024 budget is $975,000. Again, this will be coming from fund balance. We will be monitoring the health insurance fund in 2025 and beyond and hopefully identifying some cost savings in that area. and hopefully identifying some cost savings in that area. So you have a couple of options. Approve the amendment to align with the expenditures. Do not approve the amendment and provide additional appropriation for these two funds. The staff's recommendation is to approve this ordinance as submitted, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, are there any questions? Councilmember Grove?
I just wanna be clear, this is just a lowering of the fund balance. Nothing's coming out of the general fund.
Correct. This does not impact the general fund at all. It is related to the health insurance fund and the P and L fund.
And how do you feel about the balances that are sitting there now? Is that healthy for what we need, or do we need to beef that up, or what's the future hold?
Yeah, I think for the P and L, yes, it is a healthy fund balance. For health insurance, that's why we want to look at some options in 2025 and going forward, to see if we can kind of reduce our health claims in some way. Maybe we'll look at a different provider, maybe we will try to have our current provider renegotiate rates. So I think we have some options, but there is still fund balance, and we start collecting revenues against that. So we have some time to address that. Thank you.
And there are questions, counsel? Seeing no questions, as this is an ordinance on second reading. There's a public hearing for this. City Clerk, has anyone signed up for this? There's no one signed up for this ordinance. Has anybody wished to speak to this ordinance? Seeing no one, we will move on.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance, is this working? Ordinance 32, 2024, an ordinance on second reading amending ordinance 24, Series 2023, appropriated funds for the 2024 annual budget for all municipality purposes of the city of Littleton, counties of Arapahoe, Douglas, and Jefferson, state of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 32 on second reading. Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna open the voting.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, B, ordinance 31, 2024, ordinance on second reading adopting changes to the ULUC regarding neighborhood housing opportunities. Again, we'll have staff presentation, council will have time to ask questions and move on. So city manager?
Thank you, Mayor.
Staff to come up here?
This ordinance is the latest initiative in the city's ongoing efforts to help address the critical housing shortage we are experiencing in Littleton and across the Denver region. The need for more housing types to meet the needs of all people at all stages of life is rooted in our housing study from 2017 and the current city's comprehensive plan, which was, which was adopted in 2019. Housing availability and affordability have also been among the city council's very highest priorities now for several years. The ordinance that you have for, for consideration tonight meets the goals and parameters directed through several public discussions by both the Planning Commission and the city council throughout the past year. For this reason, staff supports the ordinance and stands ready to implement it should it be adopted tonight. I'll note as well, though, that while our process to this point has been conducted in public and using our standard public communication channels, we recognize and appreciate the awareness in the community that has grown recently over the past couple of months. Staff knows that this will not be the last policy discussion about increasing housing type diversity, and we're eager to continue this discussion with residents in more robust and creative ways than we have to this point as we, as we continue along the housing solution journey over coming months and years. So with that, counsel, I'm gonna ask our senior planner, Zareen Taznim, to lead our staff team in a summary presentation of the changes proposed in the ordinance.
Good evening, council. My name is Zareen Taznim. I'm a senior planner with the Community Development Department. I am joined here tonight by Jared Chipman, our planning manager, and Kathleen Osher, our deputy city manager. I am presenting ordinance 31-2024, a proposed code amendment to the Unified Land Use Code. All notification requirements for a zoning code text amendment have been met, and this council just does have direction to hear this.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Sure. Tonight, we'll talk about some background on this subject, including then go over existing code regulations, talk about the proposed text amendments to the code, give staff recommendation, and end with some discussion and questions. So the talk of housing choice and diversity started in 2017 with our housing study that was done by the city of Littleton, and then adopted in 2018. That continued on in 2019 with the adoption of the Envision Littleton Comprehensive Plan, which laid out the structure to include policies, goals, and actions. It set clear goals and policies related to supporting greater housing types, and clear goals to update the land use and zoning code based on community character. Envision Littleton stated a 2040 vision of a Littleton that is a place where visions and values endure across decades and generations. This is a place where nature and city living intersect and can both be enjoyed and be guarded with a fierce sense of stewardship. Several goals in the comp plan that speak to the nature of housing choice and diversity are laid out on this slide in front of you, including LC 1, LC 4, HN 1, and HN 4. So the ULUC, or the land use, the Unified Land Use Code, was developed to achieve goals, policies, and actions through site and building design, more defined types of housing, buffer yard protections as they relate to differences in heights and other proposals, conformity, including lot area adjustments, and as reinvestment occurs, contextual standards maintained, including pattern and design character such as conformity of rooftop design with new development. And speaking about the housing need for the city of Littleton, it's highlighted in the 2017 housing study and in Envision Littleton that the anticipated growth of Littleton over the next 20 years would require an additional 6,550 additional housing units. Over the last two decades, we've mostly seen construction of single-family detached homes and multifamily defined as five or more units in one building. Of the development projects that we currently have under review or recently approved that contain two or more units, that's about 3,085 total units, of which 405 are units that would be considered within that two-to-four unit product, so about 13% of that total. The rest consists of rental, apartment rentals, and the missing middle products would be more of a for-sale product. In terms of questions related to condos for sale, that relates more to a statewide construction defect laws, not per se related to city regulations. Nationwide examples of other places that have passed bills and ordinance to allow for more housing choice include, and statewide, in California, Washington, Oregon, and Montana, to name a few. And then in just examples of, on a city or county base, include Austin, Minneapolis, Charlotte, Arlington, and then locally Boulder. So in terms of the code amendment timeline, we've done some previous work in the past most recent years related to adjustments to our accessory dwelling unit regulations. And then in December of 2023, there was a joint study session of Planning Commission and Housing Task Force related to an interest in looking at the missing middle housing type, specifically in the neighborhood zone districts, or known more commonly as our residential zone districts. In January of 2024, during a city council study session, there was a work plan discussed with council to lay out the work plan of the code amendments being brought forward to you all, one of which included this Neighborhood Housing Opportunities Code Amendment work type. In June, we discussed during a city council study session, specifically as it related to this Neighborhood Housing Opportunities Code Amendment work, what would be included in that scope, what were the goals of it, and additionally timelines. Over through June and into October, we conducted a community survey. We had a technical stakeholder group meeting consisting of architects that have worked on these two-to-three, two-to-four unit products under the Unified Land Use Code in the city of Littleton. It included representatives from Habitat for Humanity. It included representatives from the Board of Directors of South Metro Housing Options, our member housing authority, as well a representative from Planning Commission. Staff also included background research on this topic. This all led to us holding a public comment review period on the draft code amendment and throughout the month of October. In the month of October, we also had a joint city council and Planning Commission study session to go over this draft code amendment as well. Direction from that discussion was taken to form then the ordinance that was brought forth to Planning Commission during their public hearing on November 18th, which was approved by Planning Commission with two amendments, which we'll touch upon later. We had the first reading of this ordinance with city council on December 17th, which we had a number of people attend to talk on public comment on this topic. And now we are here tonight to have the formal public hearing on this ordinance. So the primary zone districts covered for the majority of this ordinance and text amendment that it covers is our neighborhood zone districts, or more commonly known as our residential zone districts. This covers acreage residential, ACR, large lot residential, LLR, multifamily residential, MFR, medium lot residential, MLR, and small lot residential, SLR. A zoning map of the city of Littleton was included in the pack of, in the packet for the meeting tonight. As we discussed in previous council study sessions, the primary zoning, the primary housing types that are covered in this code text amendment is products that are not single-family detached or what is considered multifamily dwelling in the zoning code, which is defined as five or more units in one building or set of buildings. So these types include, or that fall under this housing type are accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, duplexes, three-to-four unit townhomes, and multiplexes, which are three or four units in the same building that do not meet the definition, which are a separate category than a townhome and cottage core communities. The next couple of slides will cover what our existing code says about these types of housing types. The existing code for accessory dwelling units classifies them as three types of products, attached, contained, and detached, laid out in this picture directly from our existing zoning code. Attached is primarily something that is attached to an existing primary dwelling unit. Detached is something that is detached from the existing primary dwelling unit. Contained is something that is contained within the existing footprint of an existing primary dwelling unit. They're primarily permitted, for attached and contained, they're permitted in all the residential zone districts, our corridor mixed zone district, neighborhood commercial zone district, and some of the downtown zone districts. Detached ADUs are permitted without alley restrictions, which means that, alley restriction means that they would need alley in order to be permitted in our downtown zone districts, corridor mixed zone district, and neighborhood commercial zone district. They're permitted with alley access restriction in our small lot residential zone district and our medium lot residential zone district. For duplexes, which are two single-family dwelling units attached in one building structure, they're currently categorized as two use types in our Unified Land Use Code. This includes dwelling, single-family attached duplex/twin home, and then dwelling, single-family duplex/twin home conversion. They're permitted in the multifamily residential zone district, corridor mixed zone district, and some downtown zone districts. They're permitted as a conditional use in our small lot residential zone district north of Kaylee Avenue. A conditional use permit is a land use application process that ultimately needs to go to Planning Commission in a public hearing setting for approval. The existing code, as it relates to multiplexes, it is a housing type, attached, single-family attached housing type that allows for up to four dwelling units in one building structure. It's designed to resemble one large, single-family home. It is currently permitted in the multifamily residential zone district, corridor mixed zone district, and some downtown zone districts. For cottage core communities, they are considered a cluster of homes arranged around a central open space. They are currently permitted in the multifamily residential zone district, medium lot residential zone district, small lot residential zone district, corridor mixed zone district, but they are only permitted when they are adjoining or adjacent to a site that is zoned, multifamily residential, neighborhood commercial, corridor mixed, business center, or industrial park, all of which are different types of zone districts. And the site must be between, the overall site must be between half an acre to three acres. The housing type permitted to be built within these types of communities are single-family detached duplex and multiplexes. As discussed during the June study session with city council, we established the following project goals for this code amendment that included clarifying code regulations, incorporating requirements of the recently passed state legislation regarding accessory dwelling units, reducing existing code barriers as are related to these different housing types, and expanding the land use types as permitted in more zone districts. So some of the clarification of the code regulations that we've done included simplifying and making definitions and use types more consistent. So we have condensed the definition and type of a duplex into just one duplex category. As you saw in a slide previously, there was categories into two different types. That has now been consolidated. Townhome has also been consolidated into just one townhome definition. Previously, it could have fell into a single-family attached category or a townhome category, so now it's a little more clear that it's just one category. And then the multiplex product has been clarified again to mean a three-to-four unit product in one building that does not meet the definition of a townhome. And a townhome specifically means a attached product that has the front and rear facade exposed, and then the side facades are attached, and then the front facade faces a street. So a multiplex that does not, a multiplex would be something that does not meet that definition. So for example, stacked duplex, or sorry, a stacked triplex product. And then the ADU categories have been simplified from three categories to just one, or sorry, to just two. It's either the attached category or the detached ADU category. We've also aligned our height definition to meet the definition of height as specified in the International Residential and International Building Code. Cottage core communities have been clarified to just permit single-family detached and duplexes as the permitted uses. So we are proposing to strike multiplexes as a permitted type from that type of community. We are also proposing to establish maximum square foot limits for the single-family detached and the duplex product, which would be a maximum of 1,200 square feet per, for structure. A number of the amendments we are proposing as part of this ordinance is incorporating the statewide ADU legislation that passed at the state legislature during the 2024 session. This includes removing restrictive standards within our code. That includes removing the alley access requirement required for detached ADUs. This also includes allowing detached ADUs in all the residential or neighborhood zone districts. We are also proposing to increase the gross floor area allowed for detached ADUs. We are allowing for, allowing them to be permitted in areas that have single-family only planned development regulations. And then we are allowing the maximum height to be increased to be equal to a single-family detached house in the same zone district. single-family detached house in the same zone district. We are also removing minimum parking requirements required for accessory dwelling units with certain provisions as per the state legislation. So for some of the existing code barriers that we are proposing to remove with this code amendment, that includes for duplexes, the requirement of their conditional use permit in lots zoned, small lot residential, removing the site plan process requirement for all zone districts for this product, removing the requirement for a duplex in SLR to be north of ADU so that they can now, if you are a SLR lot south of Kaylee, you would be permitted to build a duplex if the ordinance is approved. We are also proposing to remove the site plan process requirement for multiplexes and townhomes in the acreage residential, large lot residential, medium lot residential, and small lot residential zone districts. This is one of the amendments that was proposed by Planning Commission at their November 18th public hearing. We are also proposing to change the minimum lot area required for a single-family detached house and acreage residential to be one acre. We are adding standards for existing single-family detached houses and multifamily residential. Currently new, currently new, single-family detached homes would not be permitted in MFR. That is still not being proposed to be permitted. However, there are existing single-family detached homes in multifamily residential, and our code does not have standards for if they were wanting to do an addition or anything of that nature. So adding standards for these existing homes would allow for them to do an addition or any other upgrades of that nature. In addition, for the cottage court community type, we are proposing to increase the maximum parking required for each unit to be two spaces per unit. We are proposing to remove the adjacency requirement that is in the code. So that would be the adjacency required for that site to be next to certain sites of a certain zone district. We are also proposing to reduce the minimum site area required for a cottage court community to be a minimum of one acre to qualify, or sorry, for a quarter acre to qualify. And then in terms of expanding the housing types to be permitted in more neighborhood zone districts, we are with this code text amendment proposing for duplexes and multiplexes to be permitted in all neighborhood or residential zone districts. And we are proposing allowing or permitting three to four unit townhomes to be permitted in the medium lot residential and small lot residential zone districts. So since we presented that draft code to you at the October 22nd study session, there have been several changes made as a result of that study session as well as that Planning Commission hearing that happened in November. This included allowing multiplexes to be, proposing for multiplexes to be permitted in all neighborhood zone districts, and then for multiplexes in the, for multiplexes proposed in the acreage residential and large lot residential zone district, limiting it to just one building on an existing lot. There was also reflection of increasing the proposed maximum building coverage in medium lot residential and small lot residential to 60% from 45%. And then as an amendment during the Planning Commission hearing, they proposed to limit the maximum building coverage for this type of product to be the same as a single-family detached home in acreage residential and large lot residential. We also, as mentioned previously, changed the acreage residential minimum lot area for a single-family detached house to an acre. And then the other Planning Commission amendment that occurred was the exemption of multiplexes and townhomes from the site plan review process, which is a land use application process that would typically occur prior to a building permit review process, specifically in the acreage residential, large lot residential, medium lot residential, and small lot residential zone districts. So some clarifying notes on some of these proposed changes. The applicable housing types would still need to meet all development standards that are associated with it. So some of these development standards might limit where they can be built. That includes meeting, for example, minimum lot area and lot width standards. And then the standards would be checked at time of building permit for those that would be removed from the site plan process, or for those not removed, they would be reviewed at time of site plan review. Standards that are, also need to be met for housing types include life and safety codes, including our building code and fire code, which we will touch upon in a later slide. For planned developments, or these are designated as PLOs on our zoning map, some only allow single-family detached houses. ADUs are exempt from these planned development rules per the state legislation. However, other housing types are not exempt from these planned development rules. If this ordinance is approved and this code amendment goes into effect, it would not supersede existing planned development regulations. So for example, if a planned development regulation specifically states and is recorded in its document as stating that only, it can only have a single-family detached house, then a duplex would not be permitted to be built there unless that lot or that site specifically goes through a site plan process that is specifically approved by Planning Commission through a public hearing. For single-family detached homes, this proposed code amendment does not eliminate the ability to own or build a single-family detached home. You would still be able to build that in the zone districts that they are permitted in, and they are permitted in over half of the city's zone districts and four out of five of the residential zone districts. As it relates to homeowners associations, ADUs or accessory dwelling units are exempt from homeowner association rules per the state legislation. Other housing types are not exempt. So HOA regulations, as recorded, can be more restrictive than state and local law, but not less restrictive. Please note that the city does not administer or regulate HOA covenants as part of our development process or review processes. That is a responsibility of private HOAs. Infrastructure impacts, specifically as it relates to traffic and sanitary, we discussed that during our October study session with city council and planning commission. There was an analysis done by our public work staff using nationally and regionally standard manuals, including this established by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and then also the Denver Sanitary Sewer Design Technical Criteria Manual. The conclusion there was that the greater housing density would actually equal to a lower infrastructure demand per dwelling unit. And then the light density increase spread out evenly throughout the city should not present an issue to our existing system. The city has also been in discussion with our corresponding fire district, so the South Metro Fire District. We are not a full-service city, so a lot of our providers are actually external agencies. For any development that were to come forward, including a single-family detached house, they would need to meet the fire code. This includes that any area or development that has only a single point of access is limited to only 30 units. If it's an existing development or existing area that has more than 30 units in that single point of access, they would consider that a non-conforming development. And additional units would not be able to be added to that development to increase the density. So you would be able to replace, if somewhere were to demo a single-family house within that residential zone area, in that residential area, they could build another single-family detached house. However, they would not be able to, say, build a duplex. This also applies to, let's say, if in that area somewhere were to subdivide one lot to create two lots for, to then build two single-family homes. You would not be permitted to do that because that additional unit is increasing the nonconformity density in that area. So for zoning code text amendments, per our zoning code as it's laid out, the council may approve, approve with conditions or deny a text amendment based on consideration of the following criteria: impact mitigation, changing conditions, community need, strategic objectives, or code usage. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 31-2024 based on it meeting the following decision considerations: the changing conditions of the statewide legislation as it relates to the ADUs, the community need as it relates to housing need laid out in our housing study and comprehensive plans, and strategic objectives as laid out in our comprehensive plan as well. Staff is, however, aware of the hundreds of written public comments we have received leading up to this public hearing from, mostly in opposition as it relates to this ordinance. With that, that concludes staff's presentation, and we are now open. We are available for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Counsel, at this time, are there any questions, any clarifying questions for staff? I would say keep to questions and any opinions and can be made later. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just had a, thank you again for the presentation. I had a quick question with regards to HOAs. Would that include HOAs that are actually formed after, if we were to theoretically pass this ordinance tonight, would a community be able to form an HOA, you know, after the fact essentially, and essentially preclude themselves from the impacts of this particular ordinance? And that might be a city attorney question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protam. You know, it'd be the city's position that there's, this is not an attempt to preclude HOAs from governing their own, you know, areas. I mean, this is something where, this is the reason that people form HOAs, is to restrict each other's use in terms of lots of things, whether it's use, whether or not it's design, whether it's maintenance, all those sorts of things. So it's not the intent of the city's ordinance to preclude an HOA, whether or not it's currently formed or one that forms in the future, from adopting whatever CCNRs that they believe are warranted for their own governance.
And just to quickly follow up on that, HOAs tend to be a more complex and state-regulated animal. I had a question that came in earlier this evening with regards to something akin to an architectural covenant of sorts, and the person that asked me the question used that phrase. I'm unaware of how that would actually impact any of what's being proposed here. That may be a curveball for a later time, but something to mull over.
Your microphone.
I won't pretend to be an HOA attorney. You know, I have gone through KYWA, which is the Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act that I refer to as KYWA, other attorneys do. There are certain prohibitions that, on HOAs, things that you cannot regulate, that the state has come in and said, you can't do this. A lot of those in the past have been things such as flags, political signs, things like that, which the state law has basically said, you can't do that. More recently, and one of the items for consideration tonight is the ADU legislation. That is something where our state government last year came in, passed an ordinance, or passed a statute which requires the city, our city, to adopt an ordinance allowing for ADUs to be allowed permissive in any place that has single-family detached housing. So the ordinance before you tonight is in part designed to meet that state mandate. Within that state legislation that was passed, the state came in and basically preempted HOAs' powers to pass restrictions not allowing for ADUs. I mean, you can for reasonableness, it's pretty vague in terms of when an HOA can do that. But that's the state that has come in and expressly stated, and it's made it into KYWA, that says you can't do that. That's not something that our ordinance intends to do, so.
Counsel, my record.
So I would like to kind of help me think through all the similarities and differences between an ADU and a duplex. Those, they seem very similar to me, and I would like to kind of understand. And this, I don't know if it's, it may be a question for both staff here, but I don't know who wants to start with the, kind of, what are the differences and similarities between those two things?
So for a duplex, as we are proposing for it to be defined, and currently as it's defined, it would, it is two units, two single-family attached units in one building structure. So an attached ADU would kind of fall into that category, and then it detaches two separate structures. The primary differences come down to restrictions in terms of attached ADU would not be permitted to exceed the square footage of a primary dwelling unit, whereas a duplex doesn't have that limitation between those two units. The limitation would be the overall lot coverage, which is still the same for attached ADU. The other difference is that for a duplex, you would be able to sell the two products if you were to subdivide it or go through a plating process. In our code, we only restrict ADU, whether it's attached or detached, to be deed restricted so that it runs with the primary dwell unit or it stays with that primary lot. That is existing code regulation, and that is not a code regulation that we are proposing to change.
Okay. Reed, did you have anything to add to that?
I think Zareen summed it up pretty well. I think one of the questions that I've heard from counsel, as well as some of the public comments that have come in regarding those differences, is that they are separate products. So just to, you know, kind of reemphasize what Zareen said, you know, a duplex can be sold independently. You would come in and you would subdivide that lot. And so there would be two lots with kind of that housing product separating both of them. So they could be sold off independently. So when it comes to trying to address missing middle housing, that's an opportunity to do that, to offer something other than a single-family residential to do a duplex. When it comes to the ADUs, that's not something that necessarily addresses missing middle housing, per se, but it addresses housing. It's another location where a person could live. That, as Zareen states, is tied to the primary structure, to the primary, I guess, home. So that could not be sold off individually. You couldn't, you know, subdivide that and have, you know, your standalone ADU and then your single family, and then make another ADU. It wouldn't work like that, so that's what I would add.
Please.
So, you know, one of the, it sounds to me like one of the key differences is that duplexes allow ownership, which is a way for people to build up equity, whereas ADUs currently allow ownership of the primary unit but not ownership of the additional unit. But you also brought up this issue of subdivide. And so can you help me understand, I own a large lot unit. If I built a duplex under this current thing, I would subdivide it once. What are the kind of restrictions for those of us who own large lot or acreage to just subdivide away until we get, go from kind of one unit to, you know, multiple units between single-family and fourplex? Is that, Reed, does that question feel like it's not out of left field? Is that all right?
It, no, I think that's a perfect question, and I'm going to turn it over to staff, who has, who's probably way better at it than I am, but I'll add in some items.
Yeah, so we currently have a provision, well, first, I should start with our, we have provisions in our code that establish minimum lot width and size standards for certain housing product types. So you would first need to meet those minimum development standards as it relates to lots to be able to subdivide into smaller lots. So for example, if you did have a lot zoned acreage residential that was, let's say, you know, 1.5 acres, just making up numbers now. If you wanted to then subdivide that into two lots, you would not be able to do that under our current regulations because we require that minimum of one acre per lot. So you wouldn't be able to subdivide that unless you tacked on approval of trying to do a variance to vary the minimum lot. do a variance to vary the minimum lot area, which would then require a public hearing in front of our Board of Adjustment.
Or you would have to go through a rezoning process to have your ACR lot now become LLR and meet those minimum lot sizes.
But that rezoning process is not anything that's being changed at this, through this current proposed text amendment?
No.
Okay. May I ask one more question?
I just have a clarified question on that. So what I'm hearing is basically unless a parcel is twice the size of the minimum for that zone district, it really couldn't be subdivided easily?
Correct. And then as part of the discussion during our October study session, we had also added in a provision in our code to limit the creation of specifically the multiplex unit to be only on an existing acreage residential and large lot residential zoned lot as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Rekert.
So, sorry, just to repeat what you just said, so the current proposed changes includes a restriction on subdividing to add multiplexes?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. This is my last question. And I, really, it's not a question, well, it's a question, but I feel like you said, none of these changes to our code will stop our normal permitting process, which includes review by the west, the fire district, and if the additional housing is contrary to fire code, then it will not be permitted?
That is correct. Anyone that is trying to do any type of development would need to do their due diligence to reach out to our external agency partners, including the water district, the fire district, whomever, to make sure that they are meeting those specific districts' regulations.
Great, thank you. Thanks, that's all my questions.
You're stealing some of my questions, good thing I have a lot of them. Councilmember Grove?
Since we're on subdividing, I thought I read that subdividing was only, you could only, you could do it in every neighborhood except LLR. Am I wrong?
So we do currently have a provision in our zoning code that is existing, and we are not proposing to change it at this time, that restricts subdivisions in large lot residential, large lot residential zoned areas to only be for the, not to create more, basically more large lot residential zoned lots. So, for example, you might be able to propose a, do a subdivision or plating process that might ask for a lot line adjustment between lots, or you might be able to do a subdivision or plating process, it's the same terminology, but to ask for the consolidation of lots. So let's say if you wanted to consolidate two lots into one, that would be permitted. However, currently we have a provision that you would not be able to create more large lot residential zoned lots, and that is not something we are proposing to change at this moment with this code amendment.
So you could do it in the other neighborhoods, right? In acreage or MLR?
So, yes, you would be-
Microphone.
Sorry.
Can you just introduce yourself as well?
Yeah, Planning Manager Jared Chipman. So, under this provision, you would be able to subdivide in other zone districts. However, one of the provisions that was discussed and that has been added in, in this proposed document-
He's speaking closer to the microphone, I think that's-
Yeah, apologize. I could be right on top of this guy, I guess. In the ACR and LLR zone districts, multiplexes shall only be built on existing lots, no new lots, excuse me, new lots cannot be created for the purpose of building more multiplexes. So that's the caveat I want to place in there. You could subdivide an ACR lot under the current code and under the proposed code into two separate, single-family units, but you would not be able to do that for, for the purpose of multiplexes.
And you could do that MLR, too?
Yes.
And small lot residential, too, if it was at the minimums?
As is proposed today, yes.
And that's not a change, correct?
Correct.
Other question has to do with duplexes. When we had our discussion, we said there's duplexes in the community that look like single-family homes, and they were done back on the previous code. What ensures us that the duplexes will look like single-family homes, i.e. specifically like a door in the, one door in the front?
Yes, we do have provisions in the code that require the requirement for at least one entrance or one door to be facing the street. That is required for duplexes in any zone district and across the code. That requirement is also added into provisions for a multiplex product as well, for that to be, you know, a front door facing the street, at least one door facing the street for a multiplex product as well. In addition, something I mentioned during my presentation was some of the existing code language that is in the zoning code today that we are not proposing to change alludes to some of the design characteristics that might be, need to be conforming with existing. So, like I mentioned, roof form, if there are roofs in the existing neighborhood that might have pitch roof, then the proposed, the proposed structure would also need to have a pitch roof type of product.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Driscoll, questions?
Zareen, excuse me. Did your staff ever visit with the Historical Preservation Board to see what this, these changes might do to neighborhoods that are over 50 years old and how it changes character in these neighborhoods?
Sure, we did not speak to the Historic Preservation Board directly, however, we did speak to our Historic Preservation Planner, and she is comfortable with the changes that are being proposed.
Okay, and have we spoke with police and fire about these changes? I'm just gonna go down a list of, you know, was this addressed with those groups to just see how this would, might affect safety in our city?
Sure. As I mentioned, we spoke to the fire district previously in terms of the access issues that were brought up, and as they communicated to us, they would be mostly concerned in reviewing the access to get into any new product, and then the water supply as well. As we pointed out, if a development doesn't meet the fire code regulations, then that would be something that is not permitted.
Earlier, you talked about community character, and, you know, if they have a pitch roof, you know, you would expect a pitch roof. What if somebody wants to do a duplex and go up, not necessarily, and, you know, put that duplex or triplex, maybe even fourplex, go up next to a bunch of single-family bungalows? Is that protecting community character?
So as, as it states in our zoning code, and what we are not proposing to change at all is the established height limit of 30 feet across the board for all these different types. That is an existing height limit in the current code for single-family detached homes, and that is also the proposed height limit for all these different types of products. So it would be similar to if a single-family detached home wanted to propose to go up to that 30 feet as well. They would then need to provide buffer yard, landscape buffer yards if they were to exceed 115% of the average heights of the two lots immediately adjacent to the proposed lot of development, and that is a standard that is applied to single-family detached homes as well.
Thank you. Real quick, Reed, can you explain why this is not a zoning change and why the city decided to go with a text change? Is there a legal reason staff decided to do that?
Sure, yeah. I think it's set forth in our code what we consider to be a rezoning that's going from one zoning district to another. That's not something that's happening across all these various neighborhood zoning districts. The changes here, which is just be textual, we're going through the tables, and we're adding residential uses to residential uses. So that's what the difference is in this particular case. We're not adding commercial to, you know, next door to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback on what Steve had asked you earlier. I think, I didn't get the answer, I was, I think he was asking, can a neighborhood create a resolution amongst the neighbors saying that they want to be out of this decision if they are not part of an HOA? So pick a neighborhood that does not have an HOA, and the neighbors come together and say, "We do not want this in our neighborhood." Is that an opportunity for the neighbors to organize and make that happen?
No.
I'm thinking through it, in terms of individual approaching their neighbor and wanting to enter into some sort of agreement, some sort of covenant with their neighbor, "You don't do X and I won't do Y." I think that happens all the time, whether or not it, I mean, a deed restriction on a particular house, that this home won't be converted to a duplex. I'm sure there's private contractual agreements that all sorts of folks have in this city of Littleton that we're not aware of, so, yes, can it be done? I believe it can be done.
Okay. And so, but if this passes, are you concerned about the city potentially getting sued?
I am now.
Good. And just so we're-
I'll answer the question, so.
Yeah, well, I just was gonna have, just piggyback on that same question, you know, what does that look like as far as staff time, cost? I mean, I know it's way out there, but this is not a small issue.
Yeah, I can't, I can't quantify for how much time it would take to defend a council action. I'm not worried about the direction that council goes. I understand that there would be, just like most decisions that are made, there are people who are for decisions, there are people who are against decisions, and that's how our country operates. But I can't quantify exactly the time and expense it would take to defend a sort of lawsuit. It would kind of depend on what angle was being brought. I feel pretty confident in the city's legislative powers and their police powers to go through this process, so I'll say that.
But you've heard rumblings about potential lawsuit coming towards the city, or no?
No, I haven't heard anything specifically, no.
Okay.
Any other questions, Councilmember Reiden or Councilmember Peters? Councilmember Peters?
Thank you for clarifying what we already allow and what we're proposing to change. I feel like on other presentations, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we have allowed some of this in some areas of the city. We are saying maybe to crack the door open and allow it with guardrails elsewhere. Is, can you speak to how much we have seen develop, I don't know, over, I know you have given me those numbers before on ADUs when we opened that door. I'm not looking for anything super specific, but just what we expect to see from this?
Yeah, we've seen a very, we've seen a very limited number of ADUs being proposed currently. I believe we had about seven proposals, and not all of them came to fruition. So some of them came through the building review process and weren't ultimately pursued. I believe there's about five or six. I had a firm number of five earlier, but I think we've had a more recent application.
And then my, sorry, my other question would be, I don't know of an area where we have a cottage court community that has been developed. Have we had successful applications and seen those projects come about?
We have not had a successful cottage court application.
One of my questions was that, is, have there been inquiries to cottage courts?
There was one inquiry to cottage courts that ultimately is redeveloping in a different manner in a single-family.
Thank you. Councilmember Reiden?
Thank you for answering some of the questions that we brought up in our December meeting. I really appreciate that, especially going into more specifics. It was kind of glossed over at the beginning, but since there are a lot of people in this room who probably were not at our December meeting, could you just clarify, and this might be for you, Ms. Osher, why we are focusing on missing middle in particular and how that fits into that comp plan? I think there was one slide on it, but I think having a narrative around that could be helpful for folks here today.
Yeah, you know, the city has made-
Just introduce yourself, quick.
Kathleen Osher, Deputy City Manager. Housing has been a priority since the city went through their housing study in 2017, which had a set of recommendations adopted in 2018 that were then embedded in our comprehensive plan the following year in 2019. So where we have seen opportunity is that, and where the community goal was clearly stated is that diversity of housing type, to really meet the needs of all income levels and all ages and needs and abilities in the city. So that has really been the cornerstone of much of this work. I think missing middle has risen, has risen as a potential tool for cities because of seeing primarily single-family homes and then going to a multifamily sort of apartment or condo complex, and so there's not really anything in between. And so I think that, that is creating that opportunity to permit those types of housing that will meet the needs in a very, you know, community way that stays within the character of the city.
Any other questions? I got a few questions here. We got a lot of input over the last couple weeks here, some comments and questions from probably a few of the people in the room here, so I want to kind of go through some of these things. One of the things that I think we've seen or heard about is this is like a blanket rezoning or blanket zoning, everything's gonna be the same. Does this ordinance make all the residential zoning areas or districts the same, or are there still differences between them?
There are still differences between the different zoning districts. Oftentimes, the minimum lot size, minimum street frontage, there are a few other housing product types that still are not allowed in all zoning districts and are not proposed to be allowed in all zoning districts.
One of the questions, and we've discussed a little bit here, was the approval process. I think this idea with the site plan process, and I think there were questions about that this ordinance removes any approval process for development in residential districts. Is that true? What is the approval process, or what would the approval process look like moving forward? And what's the difference between a site plan process versus what a single-family detached home goes through?
You know, one of the amendments that was proposed and included into this proposed ordinance was to remove some more of that site planning component. What that basically does is that it's, currently for most items, except single-family homes, there's a two-step process. There's a site plan process, which is still an administratively reviewed process, but it contains two neighborhood meetings. So you have a public engagement portion of that process. By, the second step in that process, once the site plan is completed, would be the building permit process. So what is being proposed is moving more towards that building permitting process, which still gets reviewed by planning, engineering, building, you know, fire as well. We don't always include fire, but we will 100% change that in the future if this passes, to always include fire in those reviews.
And along those lines, one of the comments I heard a few times was that garages, if someone wants to do an addition of a garage, seems to have more requirements than putting in a multiplex moving forward with this proposal. Is that the case?
That would be inaccurate. Currently, a multiplex would take a site planning process, so it'd be the site plan and the building permit. A garage would only take the building permit process.
And, but, so is, so the multiplexes are still going through the site plan process? That's, I'm saying, with this ordinance?
Excuse me, as proposed, they would both go through the same process. So it wouldn't be a shorter process, it would be the same process.
So, so a garage or a single-family addition is the same process? Is this not anything more onerous than what's proposed?
It would not be more onerous.
Okay. I think this was kind of mentioned before, too, but I've heard that single-family homes, detached single-family homes, will no longer be allowed or will be required to not be built, or, you know, requiring everything to be changed to duplex. Is that what this is proposing?
No, as I stated during my presentation, we are not removing the permission for single-family detached homes to be permitted within the city of Littleton. If someone chooses to build a single-family home in the districts that they are currently permitted in, they were still permitted to be built even with this proposal, that is not part of this proposal.
Okay. I had a question that got to the, to the fire code a little bit, but just to expand because it's more than just the fire code. I think with, you know, just because a use is allowed in a district, I'll just say a duplex in a, in a LLR as an example, that doesn't mean that every single parcel in that zone district would be eligible for changes because of the requirements for a lot size and setbacks. Is that, is that true? So not, we, we actually wouldn't be able to see every single parcel convert into these different products?
Correct. Correct. That would depend on meeting the development standards of lot area, lot size, all those sort of quantifiable numbers. You know, it, there might be other requirements outside of regulations that the city regulates, as you sort of mentioned, the fire code and some of the other external agencies that might prohibit that from being developed.
Okay. And so, that would be a case-by-case basis, depending on the parcel and what's, and what is being proposed?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know this has been asked several times to the city attorney, but I just want to just confirm one more time, that this ordinance is superseding HOA covenants and regulations? That's not the case?
That's not the intent, no. I mean, HOAs have always been able to be more, more restrictive-
Can you please let him answer the question?
HOAs have always been allowed to be more restrictive than what state law says or what city, local law says.
So, with regards to everything in this ordinance, except for the ADUs, because state has preempted that?
The state has explicitly come in and preempted ADUs.
Okay. Thank you. HOA, yeah. Uh, let's see. All right, I think those are most of my questions. Councilmember Ryker, let's go back around again.
I just had two questions. So, last, at our last meeting on the 17th, and this may be for Reed, or, we passed land development impact fee, we update our land development impact fees, and so, our current, I believe our current fees are around $5,600 for a multiple, per unit in a multiple dwelling unit, and $8,200 for a single-family house. What, what are those impact fees intended to cover?
Yeah, so I pulled up our impact fee chart on the website, and there are a number of different impact fees here. So, there's a museum impact fee, there's a multimodal improvements impact fee, there's a library, police, facilities, transportation, and I need to pan over one, and that's it.
So, so we currently charge fees intended to cover the additional cost of, of any additional unit to cover our costs. That's what our impact fees are intended to do. So, that's already part of any kind of new development. So, is that-
Correct.
Okay. And then the last thing I want to say is thank you. You guys have been working on this for over a year. This has been a hard project, it's pretty complex, and I just want to say thank you very much to both of you and to staff that have been working on this. I'm appreciative of your, your work and your professionalism, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Grove, you had more questions?
Just one. Do you think most of these duplexes and multiplexes, if this were to pass, would be a retrofit or would be more of a scrape?
I think that's difficult to tell, because certain circumstances where certain homes, depending on the size, might be able to be retrofitted, and others may not, and people may seek to redevelop that site.
And do you think if they retrofit or scrape and build a new one, that these units would be more affordable, i.e. less than a single-family home?
That's also challenging to say, because we, because we don't know what size is being proposed on those, we don't know what finishes, et cetera. However, what I will say is that oftentimes what missing middle's goal is, and one of the reasons why this has been sought after, is to provide housing diversities. So, oftentimes, oftentimes, it is challenging in this current market for individuals to purchase a piece of property. The, the, the goal of this is to maybe allow the potential for someone to buy something rather than to constantly rent.
But it, it may not be cheaper than buying a single-family home. In fact, couldn't it be more expensive? Because it's, if it's a new development?
It's, you know, I, I can't really speculate on the market. What I can indicate though is that single-family homes right now are quite expensive. So, having a multiplex, there is a likelihood that a multiplex unit would most likely be less than a full-blown single-family home.
Please, please refrain from commenting.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for staff here? All right, seeing no other questions.
Mayor-
Go ahead.
I move to postpone indefinitely ordinance 3124 and would like to provide direction to staff.
Second. Please, please refrain, we're trying to conduct business here.
I would like to provide direction to staff to bring forward an ordinance or ordinances for consideration on a more incremental basis that addresses state law requirements related to ADUs, as well as missing middle housing opportunities, including but not limited to duplexes and multiplexes.
Second. There's a motion and a second to postpone ordinance 31 indefinitely. Counsel, any discussion? Councilmember Driscoll?
Sure, sure, you know, Gretchen, but I'm gonna take her, her time for a second. This is the right decision. This did come up fast, and, and now that we have everybody's attention, I think what Andrea proposed is the right way to move forward. Let's talk about ADUs. Let's talk about duplexes, talk about three and fourplexes. So, pay attention, let's get involved. I don't think, we'll need to do another survey. I think we're gonna find out plenty when city, when city council does their study sessions, and we're gonna find out plenty on how you think. So, thank you all for attending tonight, I really, and your emails.
Yes, thank you. One of the things I heard from the hundreds of emails, and certainly several of you who- Okay, is that better? Okay. Kissing the mic here, okay. One of the themes that I heard was from, again, the hundreds of emails that I received and the dozens of phone calls, and of course, from public comment in December, was that many of you felt so surprised, and I think the rug, you know, being pulled out from under you, that was never an intention on my part or my city council's part. I also heard tonight, I think that you just need some time to adjust, adapt, and grieve. And, you know, the social worker and the therapist in me totally gets that, and so, council members, I will support this postponement. I, I have a few asks, though, of you. So, I'm gonna ask that, as you learn more in the next couple of months, or however long this is postponed, and you're following this work, that you keep your minds and your hearts open to the big picture that this ordinance is trying to address. From my perspective, we're really trying to increase, increase the supply of housing because lack of supply is at the heart of homelessness. I know that can seem like a disconnect. Please keep your hearts open to this process.
Please, please let her speak.
I know, I, I mentioned I'm a social worker, and I've been serving as our liaison to the Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Work Group for the past three years. That is made up of city council members and city staff from Inglewood, Sheridan, and Littleton, trying to address a real problem that we can see visibly on our streets. We see it in our schools, we see it with people coming through our cities, and it's a real challenge. And that is why groups like Habitat for Humanity and the Colorado Coalition for the Homeless and our Housing Authority supports ordinance, ordinance changes like we're discussing tonight, because it does have an impact. Second, I'm gonna ask you to challenge some of those assumptions. Like, when I mentioned that this is connected to affordability and to homelessness, a lot of you did not believe that. Please challenge that assumption that they're disconnected, and I get it, when you think of a triplex or something going up for sale for $750,000, yeah, that's not affordable. I'm under no illusion that that will be, but this is part of a bigger picture. I'll use myself as an example. I live, I just moved into a condo after renting a studio apartment for the past 15 years of my life. That's all I could afford on a single income as a social worker who's worked in government and nonprofit most of my career. With that in mind, one of the, one of the challenges is that I don't have a privilege of single-family homeownership. And so, historically, zoning has been, has its roots in racial and socioeconomic discrimination. So, when we think of the big picture on this, just please keep some of those arguments in mind and challenge just some of the knee-jerk reactions of, of scarcity, the scarcity principle, you know? Less for, for, for me means that, you know, someone else, if someone else gets more, that means I get less, and that's not necessarily true. And then third, I'm just going to ask you, Councilmember Driscoll was like, you know, you're not gonna have to take another survey. You know what? In the future, there will be more surveys, not necessarily on this, but please take them. We only have so much information that we can work on, and I really appreciate-
Please, let her speak.
Thank you. I really appreciated the citizen who came forward tonight, Kim Calford, who had some ideas about how we can communicate better. That is important, so we appreciate that two-way feedback, so that we can make sure you know what's going on. The surprise and having rug pulled out from under you is never, was never my intention, and it's uncomfortable and creates that sense of fear, and I certainly don't want you to ever have to feel that way. So, I will support postponing this until a later time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peters, do you have any comments?
Yeah. This proposed ordinance represents the culmination of countless hours of hard work by our talented staff, and I thank you for that. It has undergone rigorous review, it has been shaped with the intent to serve the best interests of Littleton and its residents, whether you believe that or not, I'm sorry. Those residing here now and those who will hopefully reside here in the future, as a councilperson, I do believe it's my responsibility to think of the future decisions as well. Decisions we make affect our future, that is part of this job, not only to speak for people who currently live here, that has been endless in your emails. It is a decision about the future of Littleton as well. I believe this change has the potential to benefit our city into the future, it has many self-limiting guardrails. However, it's also become clear that there is more work to be done to ensure it fully reflects the needs and concerns of our community. With tonight's motion to postpone, I hope that we're demonstrating that we are listening. We hear your concerns, we want to ensure this ordinance is well-informed and thoughtfully tailored as much as possible. I realize that means we may not all agree in the end, but that is the goal. I would propose a review process that allows for further refinement and a deeper understanding of the implications of this change, that was in a lot of the emails we received. Our staff has already dedicated immense effort to this initiative, and I hesitate to ask for anything more from them, but it's evident that additional education of residents, dialogue is needed. We have to clarify what this ordinance really means for our city, not based on fear-mongering or fake numbers, but what it really could mean based on evidence. My hope is that this process will allow us to approach this change not as adversaries but as collaborators, united in our decision to hope for the best for Littleton's future. I believe Littleton is special, that we can have these conversations in a better way. I would encourage people to think before hitting send or post, as we are all neighbors, and we can exist better than this. We can do a better job at having snap reactions. For my part, I know I have offended some people, and that was never my intention, and I also vow to do better. Our city faces challenges for which there are no easy solutions, but the passion and commitment displayed here tonight give me confidence that we, as neighbors, friends, and citizens of Littleton, can meet these challenges head-on.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryker? No comment, Councilmember Grove?
I'm pleased that I'm understanding my fellow council members are going to support postponement. I think we need to look at this in small bites, first with ADUs and then look at other types of housing. It concerns me that there's not a connection between what we've learned over the last few months in terms of affordable housing and these types of new housing units in our neighborhoods. In terms of increasing supply, we don't see that the prices go down. It's very expensive to build new units, new duplexes, multiplexes, triplexes, and these things are built by developers, we've, we've seen the numbers, and they need to make a profit, and then it becomes something that's very expensive. Our citizens have invested in their property, all of you have an interest in retaining your wealth, and I think that's an aspect that we need to understand here on council. We have 3,082 multifamily units in the pipeline. It's not like we are not addressing the housing needs. Most of those are multifamily. As you well know, Columbine Square, Aspen Grove, on, down by Santa Fe, Lumen, Littleton Village, and then 16 West Dry Creek that just passed recently. So, there is new housing coming to Littleton. We're not closing the doors at all. I think we, as a council, as we move forward, looking at housing, we need to be creative and look at different alternatives in order to put these kinds of new housing units, not in the middle of our neighborhoods, where they adversely impact the character, which is the reason we bought here, which is the reason we live here, which what, what really makes Littleton unique. And that's- For example, South Metro Housing has some land, maybe that is a good place for town homes. There's properties, like companies that go out of business, that may be good alternatives for land. There's aging shopping centers that may no longer be in business, that may sell, that may be a good alternative. And when we sell these, we need to think about not making just multifamily. We need to think about these alternative housing types and encourage developers to do things beyond multifamily. And for that, we've been remiss. We need to think, as, as Andrea was saying, think ahead about how we encourage the right kind of housing in the right kinds of places. And we've heard a lot from you over the last week. I've been on council for five years and never has an issue hit such a hot button. For every email I answered, there was another one coming in. We received hundreds of emails. I did a little analysis, looking at the fall survey, how many people were for and against this, the public comment we had in our December meeting, the emails and calls we've received over the last weeks, looking at the different neighborhoods, I only gave them one vote each, and some of the public comments we received in the packet. And of those, I counted, and there's, should be, there is some overlap. In other words, somebody could have answered the survey and come had a public comment, but it gives a good indication. I totaled up, and I stopped with my email before I came here, so there's probably more, the numbers are higher. About 523 different notes or conversations or opinions that were, that I collected. Of those, 164 were for the changes, and 356 were against it. So, two-thirds of those people that talked to us said, no, we don't want this, for various reasons. And in most cases, in most cases, those emails and conversations were from the heart. You had your own reasons. Couple of them were copy and paste, we did see some of that. But overall, we received a lot of input from you, and it's great, and I hope we continue to do something that is good for our community now and in the future while preserving the character of our neighborhood. So, I will support this postponement.
Can we continue the meeting, please?
I'll just say, could you just hold your booze to the end? Like, I, I know it's coming, like, and it's okay, it's just hard to read and also manage that, so just give me a sec here. So, I have prepared a, a short statement, not reiterating the things that I've written and sent to other folks.
Three minutes, please.
I'm doing my best. I got, I got a soapbox for only a short time, so, thank you everyone for coming out, and I'm voting to oppose the postponement of the meeting. And I'd like to say that, first off, I absolutely respect the decision of this majority opinion if council does choose to postpone for need of additional information as it pertains to the factors consider, under consideration in the text amendment. So, if you are uncertain about the ramifications on shared services, impact mitigation, utility- So if you are uncertain about the ramifications on shared services, impact mitigation, utilities, or you don't feel prepared to make an amendment tonight, that feels like a justifiable decision to postpone. But I'm confident in my vote in favor of the proposal tonight. And I've sent messages to many of the folks here tonight explaining my reasoning, and my core justifications for that vote haven't changed. And that confidence is not because I know every single permutation of every single outcome for every single neighborhood. We have city planners, engineers, financial experts, and legal oversight to ensure that any development, large or small, conforms with our codes and that the cost of providing services to new residents is accounted for in the costs and the fees associated with any given project. This includes working with South Metro Fire. If a project doesn't meet those standards, the project isn't approved. So meeting those standards gives me confidence that the service impacts will be mitigated. And to the points that have been made about the character of Littleton being in jeopardy, I can't argue to say that what is being proposed isn't going to change the appearance of the city. It certainly will. I can't say that the proposal won't make some sacrifices in what folks feel are essential parts of their quality of life, how close you are to your neighbors, the height of a building, its outward appearance, decreased parking on public roads. It will absolutely impact those things. But if this was a choice between upzoning and doing nothing, then we wouldn't even have this proposal on the table. We are here because our council is considering the changing conditions that are impacting the whole front range in terms of a need for housing and to weigh the short-term sacrifices to mitigate the long-term impacts of continued suburban sprawl. If every decision was win-win and everyone was happy with us all of the time, this wouldn't be much of a job. Another point that many had proposed was to say, why not make more gradual changes over a longer period of time? Again, our enemy here is time, and we have sufficiently defined where there is a discrete community need for additional housing. For the years of delay in accommodating any new growth, we have already suffered the impact of housing being developed further and further from our core job centers, worsening traffic that people already are feeling across the region. If the solutions we propose don't meet the urgency of the moment, then we're not actually solving this problem. So finally, I just want to address something that many of you have said in your emails, and Councilmember Peters has already addressed, that we, as council, are responsible only to you, the current residents. And I just fundamentally disagree. Every citizen, and especially our elected officials, owe it to future generations to make reasonable sacrifices and incremental changes to allow future generations to prosper. We owe just as much to our future residents as our current ones. And I know that's not how many of you feel, and that's okay. That's just who I am and how I'm justifying my vote tonight. I'm looking forward to seeing the outcomes of this vote and happy to continue the conversations with my councilmembers and communicating with you as the residents to work through what we see as needs for amendments. Thank you.
I've got a few comments here. First of all, I just want to thank the city staff. I mean, they put a lot of work in here over the course of a year. I know most of you in the room say you didn't hear about this until, you know, a couple days, a couple minutes, a couple weeks ago, but city staff and city council have been working on this for over a year here. And I do have to say, I do think this is generally good policy, and I think that's evidenced by the unanimous vote by Planning Commission. I also want to thank everyone in this room for coming tonight and everyone that submitted comments. I think that's important and a vital part of this process. You kind of laughed before when I said we truly do want to hear from all of you, and we do. We want people to be involved. It's a little deflating how many meetings we have in this room when there's no one in here, because it seems no one cares. We know you care, we just need you to care more and show up and be a part of it. I would say that we've seen several hundred emails in the last couple days here, in hours, and I tried to respond to every single one of you. There were a few I missed, and I know there's been a few coming in the last four hours since I stopped checking the email there. But I do want to really thank all of those of you who engaged with me with my response and did so in a respectful manner. I think as we talked about this, and I hope as some of the presentation from staff here showed you, that this ordinance may not be what exactly you thought it was. You still may not like it, but it isn't the big bad thing that was going to completely destroy Littleton. As Mayor Protembar said, there will be some changes, and that's okay. There have been changes every single year, every single generation here in Littleton. But I think that's important that we have this dialogue and we talk about this. I do want to say, you know, for you, it's probably been a stressful couple weeks here since you found out about this. It's also been stressful for city councilmembers here. I think some of the name-calling and accusations that were lobbed at council were unnecessary, uncalled-for. You know, we are Littleton residents, we are your neighbors. Our kids go to school with your kids, or at least some of your kids that are here. I think it's important that we have a more civil discourse moving forward, rather than, you know, "I got called a Nazi today." I mean, come on, this is seriously... So I think we need to realize that, you know, we don't do this for the applause and congratulations we get, because we don't get a lot. We don't do it for the money. We all have day jobs, we all have families. This is a sacrifice and a service to the community because we all love this community just as much as you and want to see it improve. I think this idea and this narrative that we've heard, or I've heard a little bit, that this was a foregone conclusion, that council doesn't listen to the constituents, was clearly wrong. This motion to postpone is evidence that that's not the case. And so your voice does matter, and so we want you to be a part of it. And so I know that this ordinance has created intense emotions on both sides of the issue, those for and those against, and I will say, good ideas and good intentions are not limited to one side or the other. I think most of the people that emailed said, yes, we realize we have to do something. We have to address this somehow. We understand it's a problem, and so we need to figure out what that is. This isn't something that we're not going to just let go away and not address. I understand that it seems to be mostly a problem when it affects your neighborhood or next to you, but a different zone, a different district, it's not a problem. And so I heard some of that. I'm just, could you let me speak, please? This is my time to speak. You had... So you've had a year, and so I think this is... I think that this is an issue. We raised this because we heard from our community. We heard from residents that they wanted places to buy and places to rent and different housing options. And most people showed that they truly care about having attainable options that, for every stage of life, from someone buying their first home, for someone selling and moving down in a house here. And so while I do wish I were voting to approve this ordinance tonight, I do think pausing is the most prudent step right now. You know, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding of what this ordinance is, and I think talking about it more and learning about it more is the most important thing. So I think both sides stepping back, engaging with each other with positive intent, like Councilmember Reiden said, is how we can move this policy forward. And legally speaking, we have to move this policy forward with respect to ADUs. You know, postponing indefinitely is what the motion was, may sound like we're killing us, and that's not exactly where we find ourselves. So postponing indefinitely allows us flexibility to bring something different but similar back. You know, if we postpone to a date certain, there are a lot of people saying, "Bring it back on this X date." That would require the exact same ordinance to come back. And so, as I said, part of this ordinance is to comply with state law regarding the accessory dwelling units. And so we have to do that by June of this year, or else we'll be out of compliance. And so I believe staff has put in a lot of work already, and I believe they're prepared to continue that work. And so I think as Councilmember Peters and I think Councilmember Driscoll kind of mentioned, you know, we need to come back with ordinance on ADUs, and as Councilmember Reichert mentioned, that there is very little distinction between duplexes. I think we need to look at ADUs and duplexes brought back to council together here. And I think we can continue the rest of the discussion on the missing middle housing options moving forward. And so I do want everyone to have their voice heard. And with that, I just want to ask the city manager if their staff has any questions before we vote on this motion to postpone this ordinance.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, thanks for the motion and for the direction. What I'm hearing, what we're hearing, is that staff would develop a new ordinance that would be a more incremental approach and that would focus on compliance with state law for ADUs and potentially to pair that with some duplexes that are similar in nature and that would keep that same character of the houses around them. So along with that, I think, you know, our process that we will come back to council with would also include more robust and, I think, you know, creative ways to have these conversations with the public, be clear about what is in and what is not in a future ordinance, how some of these structures work on various properties, and just really strive for that shared understanding of what the policy options are and what the ordinance is. So I think we've learned there, and we will, you know, be starting tomorrow on what that process is. We'd like to schedule a council study session, you know, within the next few weeks to kind of circle back on this and make sure that we have heard you and that we have kind of the right start for the next ordinance. And we'll also have some ideas for council on that public engagement, that public discussion process, and what that could mean for timelines. So for the public, our study sessions are public, just like this one. You might see us in a little more conversational setting in this part of the room. You know, it will be posted. You can look for that within the next week or so, and we'll have that date, could be January 28th is what we're looking at. Those are conversations of the city council. We won't be seeking any action on direction for quite a while, I believe, and will be part of this process will be, as I said, much more engagement with the community. I think we'll likely be recommending more conversation with the Planning Commission to confer kind of what feels right after that public engagement, what feels right for the ordinance that would come back to council, and then it would come back to council. So I'm trying to be as clear as I can about what might be coming next, and I'm kind of thinking on my feet here. But I think that that kind of process will serve what we've heard from council and also the need for continued dialogue with the community on this important topic.
Does that work for council, everything? Well, majority? Yeah, any questions? Councilmember Reiden?
Yeah. So just so everybody here is clear, I want to make sure you all know where to go to get information. So Jim, what would be the best way for our community members to know? You mentioned January 29th, but how could they access that meeting?
Yeah. The 28th is a Tuesday, and that's a study session at the end of this month. These meetings, all council meetings, are posted on the city's website, the calendar. We have been using our social media channels. We've been using some, some folks get the Online Littleton Report and the Littleton...
I'm curious about that. Who here is signed up for the Online Littleton Report? Okay. Is that, could you all sign yourselves up?
That's a monthly newsletter with lots of good stuff about what's...
It's every other week online.
Two weeks.
The Littleton Report is a, there is a paper version of the Littleton Report that comes four times a year, but there is the Littleton Report online, which is basically a city newsletter.
Which you can sign up for and receive that as a push through email that has a lot of this kind of ongoing information.
Can you explain how they sign up? Do you know? Can you explain how they sign up for this?
Do you know the page where they can go?
Sorry.
Callie Norton?
There is a search aspect on our website. You can just type in "Littleton Report online" and it will take you to the link to sign up. And you can get that, and if you have any issues with that, just reach out to me in my office, and my staff and I will help you with that.
There's a big yellow button that says subscribe to the Littleton Report online.
Yes, and we'll also push that information through all the other channels we have. We'll also be working closely with the, with the Littleton Independent to push as much information about meetings as we can. And then as this process moves forward, we'll be using more media and more, you know, in-person and informational ways to kind of share more about the policy issue as we go forward.
And Channel 8. We have Channel 8, right? So anyone who doesn't stream and actually has cable, we have a local channel that will stream all of our city council meetings on, right, Jim? Channel 8?
Yes. Yes, all of these meetings can be viewed there.
Great.
And Facebook, and YouTube, and all of our social media channels.
And if you can, if you all sign up for, it's every other week, every other Thursday, that the Littleton Report online comes out. And if you would commit, Jim, to making sure there is an update on this specific, where we're at in that report, I think that would be helpful to our community.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Council, any other comment or questions for staff? Well, we do have a motion and a second on the table to postpone indefinitely, ordinance 31, so...
I want to hear from all these people.
We have a motion on the table we have to take care of. All right, the voting is open.
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember, or Mayor Protembar, voting no. The motion carries.
I do have some bad news or good news, depending on how you look at it. With no ordinance to vote on, there is no public hearing, and all of you have no opportunity to speak at the microphone tonight. Tonight, you can come back in the future and speak at the microphone or email us. Looking at the agenda, with no further business to conduct, we are adjourned at 8:32. Thank you, everyone, for...